Could I have a roll call?
It's not working.
There we go.
Oh, here they go. Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Maria Davies.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Ryan Wesco.
Present.
Kim York.
Here.
Kim Bailey.
Here. A pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So our mission statement is preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. We have a special community partner we would like to recognize this evening. Many of you may be aware that we had some issues with our power supply at Shoal Elementary behind the school last year. And together, our maintenance department, under the leadership of Scott Dobson, who's here with us this evening, has worked with KCPNL to do improvements behind the school there. And it's been a very good project, and KCPNL was a great partner in that process. It involved removing the old power lines that were there, installing some new transformers and other equipment, and then putting the new power lines undergrounds to improve safety and service reliability over time. And with us this evening, we have Carter Morrison. He's the field construction supervisor who worked with Scott. He's out of the belt and office. And we appreciate them as a partner to help our students in our school district. Thank you very much.
You didn't. That was paparazzi time.
Yeah, we'll make you famous or infamous. Yeah. Thanks, Carter. Appreciate you being here this evening.
Okay. Consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. All right. We are now at public comments. I want to remind, and we do have several public comments. I want to remind people of the parameters of that. Policy allows for three minutes with a total of 20 minutes for public comments. Pam Steele will be keeping track of time. We're not going to be rigid about that, but we want to keep it within certain parameters. The board welcomes public comments on topics of interest of patrons, but we can only address items specifically listed on the agenda item due to the Sunshine Law. So although we would love to engage with you, we're not allowed to do that by law. So, but we welcome hearing your comments. Items involving confidential student or personnel matters are better suited for closed session discussions due to privacy concerns and laws. Okay, so our first public comment comes from Kyle Burke. The topic is regarding playground equipment.
Honorable board members, I'd like to start by expressing my appreciation to Dr. Monses and Dr. Petten Gill for their response to our concerns about the Timber Creek Playground and sincerely thank them for answering mine as well as a host of other questions and concerns. As you know, there have been questions regarding the age and safety of the playground equipment at Timber Creek. As a PTA, we were determined to help raising $15,000, and we're in communications with buildings and grounds. However, we felt our efforts were for naught due to regulations stating equipment, even repair pieces be purchased from a single vendor in Missouri, and that equipment be installed and certified by certified district staff. Even efforts to purchase new equipment were met with similar regulations as well as extreme cost, so we scrapped any hopes of buying new playground for our children. Instead, we purchased two new buddy benches with signs and three new water fountain with bottle fillers for Timber Creek. Even with those purchases, we still have funds left that we would be happy to contribute towards the repairs that have been made or to help with the replacement costs of equipment. Please let us know what we can do to help. That's what we're here for and quite frankly, what our PTA is great at. I know that Dr. Driscoll can assure all of you that our intentions and actions as a PTA are truly to help our school in any way possible. I also hope that some good for our children comes out of the events on social media. Our PTA is here to advocate for them and enrich their lives. I hope that you can appreciate the sincerity of our request, no matter how they came about. I'd also like to add a few additional concerns. First, we would like to know, how did the equipment go so long without being repaired? If the playground is inspected every year prior to the start of school by a certified inspector, why was it allowed to pass? What is the district doing to ensure that equipment at all schools is safe going forward? And lastly, what is the district doing to ensure that this does not happen to other schools in the future? I would again like to express my gratitude to Dr. Monses and Dr. Petten Gill for their efforts. I sincerely appreciate your time and look forward to your response. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, we also want to thank you for all that you and the PTA do for our district. I know you guys work, we have an amazing PTA, so thank you for all you do. Our next speaker is Jody Price regarding playground.
Thank you all. I won't take very much time. Kyle spoke for our PTA. We do want to thank Dr. Monses, Dr. Petten Gill, for your time and effort and the entire Buildings and Grounds Department for helping make the playground safe for the first day of school. And we would also like to, for you all, to consider putting this on your agenda in the next meeting to be able to discuss it further. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Michelle Jones regarding bus transportation.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I wasn't expecting all this. But my questions were just in regards to the eliminating bus transportation. To, well specifically, I do have a fourth grade daughter who has been going to elementary school ever since kindergarten, and it's a great school system. We love the Raypek School District. I do have a 13-year-old daughter who is also going into, well, she did start seventh grade, and we're very proud of the Raymore School District. I was just questioning why, what were the deciding factors in eliminating the bus transportation? To, well, not eliminating, but I guess, I guess with the rules, not providing bus transportation to those who live within a mile of their school. I do understand that that does have to happen. I mean, there is a beginning, you know, it does have to start at some time, but I just wanted to know what the deciding factors in, were in making that decision as I have tried to contact and I have not received a response yet in the school board. Sorry, I mean, through the website. And I have made some phone calls as well as the bus company. And I have not received any straight answers yet. And we're being told that it's because we live less than a mile, we actually, and I've walked it myself, it's a .75 miles, or .75 miles, so three quarters of a mile. But it's, if that's true, then I do have a nephew who lives less than half a mile from the new school, Eagle Glen Elementary, but yet he's still being provided transportation. And I want to know what were the factors in that? So I didn't know that we had to give this to the agenda ahead of time, but understandable. But I do appreciate the crosswalks that they've added on, the additional safety, the supervision, and we have seen the school employees out there, the corners and everything, helping out. And it's a great, you know, it adds some comfort, but there's still, you know, some worries. And I just wanted to know how long that would go on with the monitoring? If they would provide crosswalks? I myself would volunteer in the morning. And, you know, I'm trying to get groups all together, because, you know, change does have to happen, and we can embrace it all together and, you know, come together. But I just wanted to know what the deciding factors were, so.
Are you wanting to comment?
Well, I'll just mention that I apologize if you did not get a return call from whoever or contact you might have. And I will see to it that that happens and we'll try to clarify your questions.
The beginning of a school year, so I understand.
Yeah, well, you're going to get a call tomorrow, okay?
Well, thank you.
Is there anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Informational items. Thank you all for, I am excited to see people so invested in our district. So it's encouraging to me that you care enough to come speak, so thank you. We are now on the wellness update.
Lisa Hadfield is going to kind of kick this off and introduce a new face to you this evening.
Yes, good evening. We are, have prepared for you the annual wellness update. You have two people in front of you. One is a familiar face and one is a new face. Kristen Grace is joining us from CBiz this evening, but I'd like you to officially welcome Lindsay Tom. She is our new wellness coordinator for the district. And we're putting her feet to the fire here and getting her kicked off to a good start. So I will turn it over to them.
Pleasure to be here. A little bit more about me. I'm originally from Knoxville, Tennessee. I just recently graduated from the University of Kansas with a degree in health information management and a minor in business. I currently work part-time for the Kansas City Chiefs, and I also work downtown at One Life Fitness in Kansas City. So now to dive into the material. Next slide, do I use this one? Oh, perfect. So this is just a previous scorecard that the wellness creator, the wellness coordinator created dating back from 2012 to 2016. The only thing I really want to note on here were our areas of concern, which were obesity, physical activity, cholesterol, and blood pressure. We can move on to the next slide. This slide just shows a simple snapshot of our biometric outcomes dashboard for last school year. What I want to note is the long bar under, over healthy cholesterol. Yes, healthy cholesterol, so we are lower now than in previous years, which is great. With Blue Cross Blue Shield's new vendor change, which I will go into more depth at a later slide, their healthy cholesterol range has increased and broadened, including more of our staff members in the healthy cholesterol range, which is great for our district. This slide simply shows the high-risk areas. Now, before we analyze this too much, I want to again mention what I said earlier. The vendors for the HRA did change this past year with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So when speaking with Blue Cross, they mentioned that comparing 2015-2016 school year to this past HRA and biometric screening in January, we're not comparing apples to apples because the metrics, outcomes, and some of the questions on the HRA did change. So for example, alcohol use. Previously, we were not considered high-risk as a district for alcohol use. One of the reasons, because on the HRA this year, one of the questions stated, "How often do you drive or ride when the driver has perhaps had too much alcohol to drink or under the influence of drugs?" Answers included, rarely, sometimes, weekly, or every day. With Blue Cross, high-risk included answers of sometimes, weekly, or almost every day. So with this new question including alcohol association, we believe that is why alcohol use is now considered a high-risk lifestyle area for the district. Another thing that I would like to mention again are the metrics on this graph. The physical activity, previously zero to 89 minutes was considered high-risk. And with this new vendor, as physical activity is our highest bar for high-risk lifestyle areas, is now anything under 150 minutes is now considered high-risk, which is a huge jump. Again, as I said...
And that's minutes per week, not per day.
Per week, yes. Per week, absolutely. Per week, moderate intensity exercise. So again, the vendors for the HRA did change. So comparing physical activity or alcohol use to previous years to this year, we're not comparing apples to apples. But going forward, starting with this past January, moving forward, we'll have better results and be able to compare. Next slide. So this is the current year scorecard, where we are now. Again, the previous coordinator did create this slide. And what I would like to note here is that our high-risk areas, we have overweight and obesity, which the BMI here is 25 or greater. So here with the new vendor classification range, we have a 51% high-risk area of BMI, which is a significant drop from where we were the previous year. This is great. With the new vendor, BMI has a larger area, larger range. So the BMI metrics for a healthy BMI now is less than or equal to 27.4, and previously it was 25. So that allows more employees and more staff members in the healthy BMI range. Lastly, blood pressure. Blood pressure is now 12%, which is not really a concern in the real world, but for Raypek, we are gradually increasing since 2012, which is what I want to focus on. High blood pressure can relate back to stress and anxiety, which is something I believe that we can reduce here in the district moving forward with the wellness program. Next slide. Looking to the future, 27, 2018. So this is the new scorecard that I will be, that we have created and I will be using moving forward. It slowly is shifting away from a focus of BMI as BMI is dying in the health industry as well. So moving forward, this will be how we compare our apples to apples with the HRA and biometric screening. Next slide. So biometric screening, at least for this year, will still be in January. Again, as I said, less emphasis will be on BMI. The HRA, yes, BMI. Going forward, I will be working with the wellness committee, and it is off to a great start. I have talked with many principals. We've had quite a lot of interest, according to the principals. They've had multiple people interested in the staff, and so they've just had to draw, which is very exciting for me, working with new faces and just the excitement of the program beginning. So our, that being said, our first meeting will be held September 30th, September 13th, with the lead members, and September 30th with the full committee. At these meetings, we will be establishing our Y statement, which is just simply a new mission and vision statement for the wellness program. Once this is established, we will have a logo design competition, which we will include the students to create a new logo for the wellness program. Being able to incorporate the staff and the students is something that I want to try to do with my time here. And tomorrow, we will be working on our three-year strategic plan with CBiz, so more to come on that. And another note, the gym reimbursement program is still going strong and popular demand by the staff. And annual calendar events, I sent out the first September hydration challenge, and I must say, there's a lot of personality when asked what they want to see from the wellness program, because I laughed in my office quite a few times at some of the answers I received. Next slide. And finally, next steps. The only thing I would say is I just need leadership and participation. As staff see their principals engaged and participating and enjoying the wellness program, and as principals see their superiors engaging and participating, that's what makes for a strong and healthy environment, and I believe we can reduce stress and anxiety in the district.
That sounds like a challenge.
Are there any questions?
With the new BMI, we might actually have a fighting chance to look.
If we can go back to the current year dashboard, which has the high-risk lifestyle areas.
Absolutely.
This one. I'll give you one change, that if you implement it, three of the metrics will automatically drop.
Yes, sir.
Have the screening in March instead of January.
Right after the holidays.
I guarantee, I guarantee you that if you have it in March instead of January, every one of those will drop. Guarantee it.
And people will be a lot happier.
So I've been told.
That is something.
One of the reasons that the January date has always, has continued to be selected is because it is, you know, Student Development Day and...
I understand why, logistically.
Yeah.
But if we want to make this change, to do it right after the holidays, when no one is thinking about health, instead of waiting until after the first of the year where everybody is thinking about health. If we're going to take a measurement and actually accurately, you know, gather the data, we should do it at the appropriate time. I've made, I've made that statement before.
Just a challenge, that wellness should be an ongoing process throughout the entire year. And if we, just to be a little devil's advocate here, if we really want to impact overall wellness, we should see just as much result in January if we're having an impact because they're thinking about being healthy all year long. Yes, I know that's not reality, but it's a great vision for our program. And it truly is driven by the calendar. That is the day we don't have students.
So while we're, while we're, just one retort. So while we're taking measurements, might I suggest we take formative and not summative? Backward, summative and not formative.
We would love to have four screenings a year, but I don't think the staff would appreciate that, so.
I was just, I've walked through our schools during December. And to expect staff to not partake in is just unrealistic.
We love our food, that's for sure.
And, and again, I mean, it's a festive time of the year. I mean, and that's something that in our culture is ingrained in us. So to fight something that's cultural, I mean, that's an uphill battle. And, you know, it's all about picking and choosing the right places to fight. If we move it to March, I think we'd have a better, you know, aspect, especially if they're going to look at this data and make judgments about staff.
But this data isn't used in part of our renewal. This is completely, this is for...
That was my question. Why does it say negotiated renewal action if it's not part of the renewal? On page five.
Anybody that collects data that says they don't use it, I will argue with that all day long. Because if we're, if they're collecting it, they're using it in some way, shape, or form.
So what does page five mean? Negotiated renewal action, 14.11% at the bottom of page five? Because I was wondering about that, too. I never thought this was used.
It is not. And if you go through the renewal calculations that Blue Cross provides, there's not a line item for wellness or...
Was it just shown on the scorecard as a piece of information?
It's only for information purposes in that, obviously, claims drive, 80% of your rate is calculated through the claims experience. And so if we can reduce the health issues, people have less claims, then that will reflect in those renewal actions. And so that's why we have typically included it along with the wellness, because the healthier we are, then hopefully the healthier our claims will be, so.
I'm going to suggest that with the calendar idea, we add that to Team Raypek agenda for the year and let them evaluate what the other options are based upon the day that they don't have students. So I think we, we're very open to what the teachers want and staff.
And if I'm wrong, I'll be the first one. I admit I'm wrong. I just, I just think that if we do move that, we will see that, that number decrease. Because any time that you just take a snapshot in time, especially right after we're all partying, I mean, which, which is also the issue with alcohol. Because if somebody is asking, I mean, typically, you know, with, with New Year's, so when you, when you first ask that question, someone's like, "Well, yeah, I did get in a car with somebody who drank too much." Now, is that a regular occurrence? Probably not, but because that just happened, it's fresh in their mind. So the further you move away from that date, you're probably going to get a more accurate and honest answer.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, welcome. We're excited to have you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks very much. And thank you for continuing to be a great supporter of the wellness, because as Lindsay said, we really need that top-down leadership. You guys have always been great and very supportive, the district staff. Your wellness committee has been one of the most enthusiastic, getting the most things done that we have with our clients. And so that will drive your program participation and that excitement throughout the district. And as you can tell, Lindsay's excited, too. So we're very happy to have her on our team as well.
Well, and I believe we've added Mr. Kaufman to the wellness committee, and I'm going to guess, I'm going to guess that we'll be doing some calisthetics and/or push-ups or something at the first wellness meeting.
We'll get him out on the track.
He's already told me that.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are now on construction change orders. Dr. Petten Gill.
I know you're all disappointed, but I don't have a PowerPoint this week or this month. We had 17 change orders last month, and hopefully, this will be our last seven change orders that you'll be presented with. I do have six change orders for Crossland Construction through our high school project and one change order through Wilcot Construction for a Shoal issue. And I'll just quickly summarize them. Our two big ones, we have a mechanical for $9,235. This involved additional rooftop unit raceways, some additional controls and power to the controls. And then we had some thermostats that had to be moved due to conflicts. The electrical of $18,125 is our largest change order this month and one of our bigger of the projects. That involved moving several rooftop unit sensors. We had to add a floor box in the dome. We didn't have any power to the bandroom shades. We added some additional needs to our HVAC controls. And there was also some required emergency lighting in the dome. I should probably throw in, there would be another $20,000 more expensive had our own Buildings and Grounds Department not put a lot of other priorities on hold and worked a full weekend, now most of a week, and then into the weekend, and installed 90% of the emergency lighting that was required. I can't say enough about the work that they've done, and they've been so stretched this summer on top of a normal year. We also have, change order 46 is a water credit. That gets credited to us, and then we pay it on. But just due to the excess, some excessive water usage during testing and working on sprinkler systems, that does, fire suppression water doesn't go through meters. So when it shows up that the water company's giving out more water than they thought they should, we did some calculations and Crossland agreed to pay a $4,500 credit so that, to cover that extra water. We had some floor patching, and then there was actually a fabric credit mixed in there. They, the fabric that they sent on some of our library furniture wasn't exactly what we asked for, and we chose to take a credit instead of sending it back. And that way, we'd also have furniture ready for the first day of school. And it still looks good. On our civil side, there was some change in scope of our sidewalk replacement and ended up not replacing quite as much as we thought we would. So that's a $2,618 credit. And finally, in our, for the last change order, hopefully ever, change order 49 for Crossland is for dome fire alarm. There were some additional required strobes and some door hole opens in the dome. The doors have to close automatically in the case of a fire alarm. So there were some additional things we had to add there. For Kim, before she asked the project totals, the entire change order process throughout this 23 and a half million dollar project was $174,684. That is .74% above our base bid. So that's, that's, that's really good.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a, that's credit to our own guys, our architects, and our contractors for all working together and, and doing this project within budget. Finally, I do have one change order for Shoal, for through, excuse me, for Wilcot, for Shoal. There was no additional fire alarms added in the plans for the mezzanine. And so our, our emergency lighting and everything wasn't quite up to par. So we did have them add $5,766 worth of emergency lighting inside restrooms, some additional ADA grab bars, and then the expensive part of adding the fire alarms and strobes in the mezzanine and shoal.
And just so you know, the mezzanine and shoals in the gymnasium above the locker room area, behind the bleachers.
There's hidden stairs back there, so. Previous change orders for Wilcot was actually setting at a credit of a little over $9,500. And so after this change order, we would still be setting at a $3,805 credit in terms of change orders below the original base bid. So be happy to take any questions.
Quick question, I just don't know where it would go. On the new high school building, because we have so many more access points, is there a central location somewhere that they can see when doors are being opened? Like if the art room uses their area out there?
If a door's open for more than two minutes, my understanding is that we would get, we would have a notification, being proactive on the security instead of just waiting until it's been open.
Right.
We get a notification that a door's been left open. I'm not sure exactly how that system works, but I know it's set up to do that. I'm not sure it's actually turned on at this point, but that's the direction we're going.
But if somebody just comes in and out, you're not going to necessarily know?
Not necessarily. I mean, we're going to have, like, there's fenced-in areas on a lot of those exits. So we have student, art students that'll be going in and out into the fenced area.
So is it locked from the outside, then, perhaps, on some of those?
Yes, they'll, they'll have their badge to go in and out of those.
Okay, that was my concern.
And then we would have a spread, you know, we would have a list of when people entered and came out. But I don't know that there's a big red light that goes off in the office or anything.
But you can't open the door from the outside without a badge unless you come in.
Correct, all of our exterior doors are locked.
Unless you come in through the front main entrance.
Well, that's what we're getting at, yeah.
Because you're security, right?
Yes.
I don't have a question, just a statement. The fact that we're within 1% is truly impressive, especially with the scope and size of this project.
And remodeling.
And, and the fact that it was done by a school, which doesn't do it on a regular basis, really says a lot about, about our staff and about our contractors that we hired. And speaking of staff, and since Mr. Dobson, you know, is here, I like it when we start to use internal staff for projects and really showcase the talent that we have. Any opportunity that we can give them to shine, I don't want to put more work on them, but any time that we can do something internally... But anytime that we can do something internally, I, I would love to encourage it because I like to see our internal staff really being able to do what it is that we hired them to do as opposed to always contracting out. And I know sometimes workloads don't permit that. But anytime that we can do that and, and use internal talent.
We, we stretch them pretty thin.
Well, and, and I understand. But, you know, on behalf of the board, if, if I may, you know, to, to, to thank them and just to, you know, it was an impressive thing that they did.
Absolutely.
So if you would pass that on.
Be happy to.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve Crossland Construction Change Orders forty-four through forty-nine and Wilcox Construction Change Order Five.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Petten Gill. Laptop computers, Brian Gooding.
Good evening. Uh, hey, we did a RFP for pricing on laptops to be used in Project Lead the Way classrooms. The RFP requests were sent to twenty companies as well as advertised on the district website. We received proposals from nine vendors. All proposals were conclude, or were included or considered in the evaluation process, excuse me. The bid included price requests for thirty-six Dell Latitude fifty-four eighty or similar laptops. The results of the proposals received and the administrators, administrations recommendations are based on the durability of the laptop, the warranty, the battery life, and the cost per unit. And just as an aside, twenty-four of the thirty-six laptops are going to be used in middle schools. And so those are part of the Project Lead the Way grant that was approved by you guys earlier. So that'll be a fifty-fifty matching funds. And the remaining twelve are going to go to the high school. So with that being said, tonight, we're asking for board approval to purchase thirty-six Toshiba Tecra C40C laptops with four-year warranty from Toshiba for twenty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from Toshiba to purchase thirty-six laptop computers with four-year warranty in the amount of twenty-four thousand, six ninety-six.
Is there...
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the assessment plan. Dr. Volker.
Dr. Barr is going to join me as well. Thank you, Dr. Barr. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I would like to present for your approval the two thousand seventeen eighteen District Assessment Plan. Assessments are a key part of the instructional process. They help our staff determine what our students know and how we can support them in their learning. While our assessment plan is very similar to last year, we do have a couple of additional items we would like to highlight this evening. And then I'm going to ask Dr. Barr to speak to you concerning our recommendation for our junior-level students this year. This change that she's going to speak to you about was necessitated when we were notified by Department of, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that they would no longer be funding a statewide junior-level ACT due to budget cuts, which that caused us to look at our current plan and see what we should do for our students here in We're More Peculiar. On, or throughout the assessment plan, looking at some changes, we were also recently notified by Desi that Peculiar Elementary Kindergarteners have been selected to participate in a field study of the International Early Learning Study. That's the name, the IELS. The IELS comes to us from the U.S. Department of Education. It's a study of five-year-olds that will allow the U.S. to compare skills and competencies of our youngest school-aged children to their peers in other countries. So we've been selected just as one random sample of that elementary environment, kindergarteners in Peculiar. So it is a play-based study that's given on tablets. The assessments untimed will be split across two days to minimize children's time away from regular classroom activity. It takes about thirty minutes each day. So it's not a long, drawn-out assessment. We will notify parents of this new assessment at Peculiar and give them the opportunity to opt out if they so choose. So they can, if they would like their child not to participate, that's absolutely fine. So we can do that. Study findings will not identify participating districts, schools, students, or individual staff. So I don't believe we'll get back individual results from this as well. Parents will be asked to take a survey, a short survey regarding the assessment, and then will be compensated twenty dollars when that survey is complete. So that is definitely not coming from district funds, but I think that is important to note.
Is the district receiving any type of stipend to allow them access to our students?
It is, they offered with that. We were not necessarily giving a choice. It was more a random selection. But the, the person facilitating the assessment, I believe, gets a two-hundred-dollar additional time and expense we're going, kind of stipend to, to do that. I think the district might receive another two-hundred dollars for their, in total, being four-hundred dollars to participate in this. But I don't think it wasn't any factor in our selection. We were randomly selected. So I think they're just doing that to try and compensate you for the, the principal or the assessment coordinator at the building, maybe it's the counselor, most likely, at Peculiar, helping to put this together. So the second change is really a clerical one. The Scholastic Reading Inventory, so I, we hear this all the time, so I just wanted to notify you, has changed its name to The Reading Inventory. We use this assessment to determine reading levels of our ninth through twelfth grade students. So you're going to see TRI scores instead of SRI scores. So when people see that, it's the same thing, they decide to change their name. Our third change does relate to our science map and EOC assessments. Due to the update of the science standards across the state, fifth grade and eighth grade science map test and biology EOC test will be administered as a field test across Missouri. The scores will not be counted towards the two thousand and eighteen APR score. So we're going to take it, students will take it, but it will not be a traditional score to assessment as it has been in the past, just because it's a field test item year.
And that's a departure of what Desi's done in the past. Typically, in the past, they'll make you take the regular test, and then they'll have additional tests for selected folks to test out the new test. And now they're just going to say, we're just going to field test the new one and not count that year.
What, what, for those who don't know, what does a field test mean? To me, that sounds like you're going out in the field.
We are not. Oh, and with science, that could be really confusing. Field tests, they are testing items, their reliability, their validity. So they will give sample, what they would call, usually you would embed that in your old test and three or four questions would not be scored. They'd be pulled out and then they'd check, check the statistics, the matrix for those, whether the kids answered appropriately or how they thought they should answer, and check those across the different levels.
Are you saying they're trying new questions?
So really, it's a practice. Yes, that's exactly what...
I think you're saying we're trying, they're trying new questions.
They're trying, thank you, Ms. York, they're trying new questions. That's, I really do appreciate that Desi's taking this approach. And the years that they give us the full assessment and then ask students to do another bank, that's, that's too much. And if we're going to have new standards, we might as well do the field test and then we'll start with the, the new valid and reliable assessment next year. And I, I do like that approach. So now Dr. Barr is going to talk to you about our biggest adjustment with our assessment plan, the change to the universal ACT assessment for our juniors.
So as Dr. Volker had said, that due to budget cuts, the Department of Elementary and Secondary has decided to no longer fund the junior ACT. And we were disappointed by this, as we believe providing one free ACT test does provide powerful information and a service to many of our families. So our recommendation to address this is based on state practice, but with a focus on providing the right assessment for each student based on his or her future plans. So we are proposing that in April of this school year, we provide free-of-cost to our families four options for our eleventh graders. Juniors would sign up to take one of the following, the ACT, the Accuplacer, the ACT Work Keys, or the ASVAB. ACT would be primarily for our students who are four-year college-bound, although if they're two-year college-bound and they wish to take it, that would still be fine. Accuplacer would be for our students who are enrolling in two-year community colleges, such as our metropolitan community colleges. That test actually replaced the compass, and that's what they use as, as an entrance exam, although they can also use the ACT. The ACT Work Keys would be for students who plan on entering the workforce or perhaps tech school. And this is really beneficial as Cass County is working towards becoming a work-ready community and work-ready certificates could actually help them, doesn't guarantee them a job, but it certainly does help them. So that would be a valuable assessment for our students. And then the ASVAB would be for those students who are planning to enlist in the military. So if the district were to provide these options to our junior students, the approximate cost, and we are obviously guessing a little on who would sign up for what, but based on current enrollment, would be approximately eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. And this cost could vary slightly based on changes in students' post-secondary plans during the school year.
Questions?
I would very much like us to see, like us to see going that route. I think it's a big benefit to our kids.
I just had one question on the ASVAB. And, okay, so I, I don't know what the trends are now, but when I was in high school, some students would take the ASVAB and the ACT. So you said that they could choose one. If the ASVAB's free, could that just be anyone could take that and they get to choose from the other three? If ASVAB's free?
Yes, the ASVAB is free, so they could choose that, or they could take it in the fall.
I would like to see someone choose the free test and not get to take the ACT, right?
Right, we could pay for the ACT.
So choose between the three that cost and anybody can take the ASVAB, right?
And typically, we've also offered the ASVAB in the fall, so during our super test day.
We want to do both.
So because the state's not offering the ACT to juniors, and we're going to do it internally, and because this test is only going to be offered to our students, can we adjust the times in which it's taken?
ACT gives a certain dates that you can do this kind of widespread testing. So we picked the, we were proposing the April one because that's what we're used to doing.
The date's fine, but the time? Because before, they were rigid that everybody started at the same time, and usually it was the first thing in the morning. Can we, can we experiment with pushing that time back just to see if there is a difference in test result?
Uh, we could. One of the reasons, we will be a little shorter this year if we go with this proposal because we did opt not to do the writing component, which was a whole additional slot of time. So that kind of kept us stuck because then we also had to get all our testing in before lunch. So we do have a little more flexibility as far as when we would start, when we take the writing component off.
I would be interested to see if, if we push it back, if that impacts test scores at all. I have my, I have my own theory on, on, on how I would have performed had it been offered at noon as opposed to eight o'clock in the morning.
We definitely have a little more flexibility in, in absence of that writing portion, so we can look at that.
But I, I think it's great that we're offering Work Keys as an alternative, especially, you know, we're at a place in our country's history where, for the first time, sometimes going to college doesn't make financial sense. So having an alternative to debt is a great alternative.
Any other questions or comments? I, I agree with the comments of the board. I think this is a great direction to go for servicing all of the, the needs of all of our students, not just a select group.
Have they come up with the test for the Work Keys?
How did they?
Have they?
Have they come up with?
The test for the Work Keys?
Yes, it's been in place.
Yes, oh, it's been in existence for many, many years, and it's through ACT.
Okay.
It used to just be offered through community colleges.
Yeah, now different workforce entities can offer it. And then we actually did offer it to sixty-something seniors last year whilst our juniors were taking the ACT, just to kind of get a feel for where kids were performing and what kind of curriculum adjustments we might need to make to help kids perform better, should that be their choice of assessment.
Thank you.
One thing I'll just note here, that it will be interesting to see what happens across school districts across the state because there are other districts considering funding it as an option, but many will not. And so it's going to be a situation where comparability among districts is going to go back out the window like it was previously, because you'll have some districts testing thirty and forty percent of their students, and we might be closer to eighty or more. So with the statewide assessment, everybody was pretty much in the ninety percent-plus range, and it made it a little easier to compare among districts. So that's probably going to go away with this. And it wouldn't surprise me that we don't have a higher percentage than most because you're willing to, to fund it for those who want to take it, so.
What, what percentage of students do you think would take it if the parents had to pay for it?
Well, prior to the statewide assessment, it was in between seventy and seventy-five percent typically. And I think with the statewide funding of it, it got up to ninety-six percent or above for us. I think it, my guess is, we've had many discussions about what it would be. I think we'll be, still be in the eighty percent range, give or take. So there'll be some students, it just makes a whole lot more sense to take one of the other tests that day.
Yeah.
And that's because of our demographics. Other school districts would have a different percentage.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen Assessment Plan.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work on that. Strategic Planning Consultant Agreement.
So we've had discussions as, with the board and our leadership team over the past several months about preparing for a new strategic planning process. And that planning is underway and ongoing. And one of the things we did was request proposals from three different firms about how they could help us with our community engagement that goes with that. And after having conversations with the board in our work sessions this summer, we landed on the KU Public Management Center as, as the vendor we wanted to work with. And for those of you that may be familiar with them, they are the group that organized the Reimagine Raymore effort from a couple of years ago. So don't let the KU thing throw you off. That's, they, they have been in our community before, and, and they're pretty good at helping us with community engagement, we believe. So our, our strategic planning leadership group met with their representatives last week to discuss how they could help us with our community engagement this fall as we do our strategic planning. And they, they refined their proposal to kind of match what our timeline and expectations were. And so that's been captured in here. So for a little over twelve thousand dollars, they could, they're going to help us with the important community engagement piece of this. And what I like about using an outside company is that they are unbiased, third-party, and collecting feedback from our community through this process, which I think is helpful.
And I would like to share, they were very open in our meeting of being very flexible about what we wanted them to do and what we didn't need them to do. They were very open to working with us and accommodating.
Yeah, I was impressed with their professionalism and their breadth of knowledge on the subject, so.
And asking about the Reimagine Raymore, I spoke with my colleagues that are on the city council. And they'd gone through several different strategic planning processes with other groups. And, and this is the outfit that they actually liked the best. And they felt that they got the best results with their facilitation as opposed to some of the other ones that are out there.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Strategic Planning Committee Engagement Proposal from KU Public Management Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. We are on Board Policy, BBFA.
So every other year, the board is asked to re, reapprove this policy. There's no changes to it. It's a financial disclosure policy. And by reapproving it, the Missouri Ethics Commission then will only require board members to do the simple financial disclosure, because the board has adopted this as their district-wide, re-adopted this as our district-wide policy. So this is very procedural in nature this time.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the policy as presented, BBFA.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. We are now on Committee Reports.
Well, the Audit Finance Committee met. And we met with the auditors who were finishing up their external audit preliminary work, having been here, how many days, four days, three days? Four days? And so, well, actually, their final work, excuse me. And so we met with them and just went over their recommendations. And they gave the presentation, kind of a preliminary, that they will be presenting to us in our October board meeting. And it was very informative. They did a great job. And more importantly, our finance staff does a great job. And they spoke very highly and very favorably of our staff. Thank you, Cindy, and staff, and Dr. Montz.
And I'll just add on to what Kim was saying, is one of the things that, that I asked, you know, as compared to other districts, you know, a lot of other districts have major challenges before them, whereas our district is mainly focused on, you know, best practices and maintaining what we're doing. So it's a different focus than a lot of the other districts around the state. So our staff is to be commended.
Any other committee reports?
Well, we had Strategic Planning Committee, but I think we've kind of already covered the work we did there because we talked about the, the firm.
I will say, I'm excited about that. I feel like we're pulling in some significant stakeholders, some significant patrons from our district to really gather, start to gather some information needed to move our district forward. So I'm excited about that process.
Yeah, I would add on to that, that the committee, we did spend a significant amount of time at both of our meetings talking about how to, you know, collecting the representatives from our community and trying to make sure we got a good, broad set of representation there, so.
So just so everybody understands, there'll be a central planning committee, but then there'll be a community-wide engagement that comes out of this later in the fall. So just keep your, your email box open because you're going to get an invitation at some point in the near future.
I know we're early in the year, so a lot of committees haven't begun to meet yet. Are there any other? All right, moving on to Superintendent's Report.
Well, first, I would like to report, I think we're going to have a record number of students in our district this year. At this point, this week, with school opening, we have over sixty-one hundred students. At this point, this week, with the school opening, we have over 6,100 students K-12, plus another 160 students in pre-K. So, those are the strongest numbers we've had that I, I believe ever at the beginning of a school year. It'll be end of September before we have our official council, right now it's still in flux to a certain extent. I do wanna thank our patrons for their patience as we worked through all the back-to-school logistics. We, we obviously did a lot of change this summer and a lot of logistics to work through and work around, and none, the least of which may not be the school road improvements that are going on that are obviously affecting traffic around this campus. But things were much better in day two than they were day one, and they'll get better each day as we get into the next week or two. I wanna echo the comments earlier about the work of our own staff over the course of the summer and all they had to do to make all of our transitions happen. We moved over 260 staff members across the district from one location to another, and that equated to over 44,000 boxes, so the task was immense, and we had great support from our custodial department, our Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Department, and our Technology Department, the folks that are here 12 months making all that happen. So, they did a great job. Obviously, little things we still need to tidy up on, but we're, we're in a good shape, given, given the amount of change we had to work through. And then I also thought we had a great turnout from our community to our first Friday night football game last week. When you put our football team together, our band, our cheerleaders, our dance squad, you get over 300 kids involved, and then the community come out and supports them in a great way, and you happen to win the game too against your neighbor across the street, that's even better. But I invite everybody to pick some activities of our students this fall and come out and see the great things that they do, because it's, it's really cool, and we already know from Mr. Cruz's reports that our kids that are involved do better in school academically, so it's a win-win for everybody, including our community. So, good start to the school year, given everything that we've had to work our way through, so.
All right, thank you, Dr. Montes. Board of Education comments?
Go ahead.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, I, I wanna thank all the staff members who had their cheese moved for, for their patience and, and just for their dedication to the students, because in the end, it'll really make a difference. And, and I know that all the construction, whereas it's a headache and it's a hassle, eventually, it'll be a memory, and we won't even think about it, you know? It's just like the first phase of school road, no one thinks about that one or the second one, it's the one that's before. So, before long, it'll be a memory, and, and then what we'll be left with is an impressive facility. And I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody, our future students that come out, because now they have a lot more amenities and learning tools that they didn't have before. So, I'm anxious to see.
I would like to thank all of our students, or our teachers and staff at all the elementaries and middle schools with all the shifting that went on with changing all the elementaries to the K-5s, and all of the teachers that were very gracious and went to where they were needed, and we do truly thank you for that moving. We know it's not easy, we all get in our comfort zones, and that change can be hard sometimes, but we know that you guys will do well. Again, thanks for all the people who worked all summer long to get us to this week, it was very, very much appreciated, thank you. And enrollment went really well, again.
Any other comments?
In addition, I echo your compliments to staff and families, I also wanna just thank our community. I mean, there has been a lot of transitions, and overall, people have been very accommodating and patient with that process. So, I wanna thank, we have such an amazing community that's supportive of our students and our staff, and, and I just wanna thank the community as well.
So, yes, echo all the thank yous. Then I would just like to add that I think it is a very exciting time right now with, you know, the completion of the construction project and, you know, all the moves and changes, and every time I, you know, drive past the new high school addition, even if it's for the third time, because I went the wrong direction, I'm in awe of just how awesome that looks, you know, with the silver and then the right back and the dumb, and it, it's just really exciting, and even my girls who aren't, or are still a year or more off from high school are talking about the Culinary Arts Center and how they can't wait to get to high school, and I just, it's a really exciting time, and glad, glad we all made it through it. So, any other comments? All right, moving on to calendar of events, September 14th is our work session at 6:00 PM. Would love to have anyone come attend that to, to hear us work through things. Our next meeting is gonna be September 28th at 7:00 PM here. Work session is here as well, so would love to have anyone, everyone's welcome to come[1782.33]